As the moderator for this special, very special sessions, and also the four prominent young leaders delegates.
Thank you. We have seen on the screen four young speakers, four young leaders, four of the most brilliant young people, candidates selected from all over the world to be here today in this conference, the 16th South China Sea International Conference. And so, welcome, welcome to this session, a special session with four very young speakers, promising to give us a new fresh air and motivation for the conference and for the future of the region. This session is on the topic, the next generation narratives of the maritime security. The topic is very new on the maritime security, but particularly it focuses on the young people's perspective as a way to inspire them, to call them for a shared responsibility for one of the flashpoints of this contemporary world. And with the importance of the sea, of the ocean, the maritime security is no longer a problem, an issue at sea, of the sea, but also the future of humanity, an opportunity for people to demonstrate how we, how they live together, how they cooperate among them. It is not the exception for the South China Sea. In this sea, the maritime security is now facing many big challenges, such as maritime crime, exhausted maritime resources, maritime environmental pollution, and ecosystem devastation, territorial disputes and their consequences, et cetera. This make a pessimist, this make a pessimistic picture of the region, of the maritime security in the South China Sea. So, how can we do? And particularly, especially the young people, how do they think we can do? We will discuss about that right now in this special session with four young speakers. And then, there will have some commentaries from other young brilliant representatives before the Q and A session. So now, let me introduce the first presentation. I would like to invite Mr. Professor Juan Pablo Sim-Sief from Chile. Professor Sim-Sief is a professor at the Faculty of Government at Universidad de Cerrolo and a researcher at the Center of International Relations Studies, Universidad de Cerrolo, Chile. He got an M.A. degree in Australia, and now he is PhD candidate in Fudan University, China. The East Sea, Southeast Asia is also one of his biggest interest in his research. So now, let me introduce Ms. Professor Sim-Sief's presentation.
Thank you so much. First of all, thank, thank you to the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam for having me here. And well, and thank you for being invited to this Young Leaders Program. I mean, I may not have hair anymore, but you know, I'm very glad to be called young still. So, thank you for that. So, having said that, why should you guys listen to a random professor from Chile, right? Well, it turns out that in Latin America, we know a few things. I'd say that we know a great deal about failed international organizations, and we do know a great deal about how to deal with great powers, all right? Particularly regional hegemon. So, I hope to bring a little bit of that knowledge and that expertise to, let's say, to ask a few, a few questions. I don't bring much certainty, just a few, a few questions that I do believe that might be a good idea to explore, all right? So, having said that, we should start. So, again, and we've talked about this today, we are in a great power era. That is very, very clear. We're no longer in the unipolar moment. What does that mean? Well, it means that a lot of the certainties that we had for the longest time are not longer there, okay? Great power competition, we are back to a struggle between superpowers, and that really changes, I'd say, pretty much everything we know in IR, okay? So, in that sense, I believe that Southeast Asia and Latin America can really, we can really learn from each other. I would argue that there are a lot of similarities. And well, I'll, I'll make the case that we can learn from each other, and we might be able to, you know, create some new knowledge and maybe implement that, but that would be later. Okay, so, we know that ASEAN faces many, many, many challenges, consensus-based decision-making. And to that degree, I do believe that mini lateralism might be a good idea to, at the very least, explore, let's say, okay? And that maybe, maybe this idea can really empower smaller states. We'll see. So, what is my argument? My argument is that mini lateralism is really a strategic, strategic tool that can really help small and middle powers. When we have mini lateral schemes, you only have a handful of countries, therefore, less competing interests. And these mini lateral schemes can give flexibility if they are extremely focused on specific topics, okay? That would be my core argument. In order to try to advance this argument, I will make a quick comparison with Latin America, which is obviously my area of expertise. And in that sense, I will even, I mean, I'll bring knowledge from the Pacific Alliance, which might be a little bit weird, because the Pacific Alliance primarily deals with economic issues. But my argument would be that what matters here is the institutional structure and how we can use that to solve some issues or, at the very least, to provide some potential solutions, okay? So, and within that, I do believe that a mini lateral scheme can use consensus base, but because when it is in a smaller scale, it can be actually a tool for better decisions, okay? So, having said that, let's, well, I'll, I'll make a quick comparison, and you'll see that later. Basically, I think that, again, as I said, we can compare, and we'll see how there are many elements in common between, between South America and between Southeast Asia. So, why Southeast Asia and why Latin America? As you can see, many elements in common, such as colonialism, such as underdevelopment, such as young population, vulnerable to climate change, you name it, okay? There are multiple elements in common. Can we learn from each other? I think so. But obviously, there are plenty and plenty of differences. But I'd argue that even though there are many differences, it is still possible to compare these two regions and learn from each other, okay? That is my core argument, and that is the case I'll make today. So, why am I choosing the Pacific Alliance as a case study? Well, mostly because it is an organization that helped us in South America. It really worked out. It enhanced regional integration. It helped to foster foreign investment, political collaboration, and economic growth. It really worked, okay? It has many problems, but it has really worked, which is quite something when we are talking about Latin America, okay? Because as you will see now, there are many, many cases of failed international organizations. So, we have the failure of the free trade area of the Americas. In this case, there were some substantial problems between the interests of the United States and the interests of some major players in the region, such as Brazil and Venezuela. Mercosur is another example. I argue that that organization hasn't lived up to its full potential, okay? And just like those two cases, we have UNASUR, we have the Indian Community, and EBIT, et cetera. So, what am I saying with this? I'm saying that multilateral, multilateralism or regionalism in Latin America hasn't really worked. But what has worked? Well, mini lateralism. Why? Because we have a handful of countries that come together with a very specific issue. They create an organization that is very light on its institutions. Therefore, it is easier to make decisions, okay? That would be my main argument. So, having said that, again, the Pacific Alliance has a small and focused membership. It has pragmatic and clear objectives and provides flexibility and adaptability, okay? It's a consensus, and even though it uses consensus decision-making, because you only have a handful of countries, only four countries, it is possible to come to certain key agreements and develop a key agenda, all right? So, that would be my core argument. But then, how do we apply that to Southeast Asia? That is the key issue. Again, the Pacific Alliance, it is primarily economic. We know that ASEAN isn't just that. And when we're dealing with South China Sea security, you can see and you can make an easy case that the Pacific Alliance wouldn't be a good example, because one is economic and the other goes well, well beyond that. Well, to that, to that element, I would argue quite easily that what we should care here is about really decision-making. And again, I'm not making the case that we should go beyond ASEAN. And I know that some of you will probably later argue that advancing a mini lateral scheme for Southeast Asian security could really undermine ASEAN centrality, and fair enough. But what I'm trying to argue here is that there, there is space for both, okay? On the one hand, you have ASEAN. ASEAN has its role. But if, if the Southeast Asian countries want to advance a different agenda where they cannot do it within ASEAN, it might be a good idea to explore mini lateralism, okay? It has worked for us. I'm not saying that it's necessarily gonna work in Southeast Asia. What I'm trying to say is that it might be a good idea to explore, okay? Do we need more data? Absolutely, okay? There is plenty of data around. We need to gather that, we need to process that. But what I'm trying to say is that, okay, there are some real issues. South China Sea security, it is key not only for Southeast Asia. It is a key waterway, and there is a stake in Southeast Asian security for, you could argue, the whole world. And in that sense, some key issues require some special, or let's say that they require some creativity. So, in that sense, mini lateralism might be part of the answer. It did work for us. Is it perfect? No, it isn't. But then again, I would argue, again and again and again, that it might, might be a good idea to explore that. So, anyway, that's all for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Professor Sief. I was really affected by your comparison between two regions, the South China, sorry, Southeast Asia and Latin America. And with that, I think we will have more to discuss about later, okay? And then, I would like to invite Ms. Nora Anissa from Malaysia, sorry, from Indonesia. I'm sorry. Ms. Nora Anissa holds a Bachelor's Degree in International Relations from Mula Waman University. She is also alumni of Young Southeast Asian Leader Initiatives, Academic Fellowship on Environmental Issues at East West Center in Honolulu, Hawaii, with concentration on sustainable oceans. Now, her presentation is on promoting ocean account frameworks in ASEAN Plus Three Regional Cooperation in the South China Sea.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nora Anissa. I'm from Indonesia. And today, my presentation is the rule ASEAN Plus Three in Ocean Accounts as a tool of promoting cooperation in South China Sea. And then, for your information, my presentation focuses on good environmental governance, and then the context is quite downstream, because it focuses on environmental and also international development. So, to begin with, I would like to start how people and the young generation in the 21st century, they often perceive, perceive and acknowledge South China Sea as the geopolitical disputes and also political war, and then military operation, and so on. But they don't realize that what is, sorry. Okay, what is happening right now in the real world, which means that climate change and then international development are growing dramatically. And then, I summarize that the coastal development in the South China Sea has implications on challenging situation in the marine species. And then, it has leads to overfishing and exploitation by biodiversity fishermen, where this contact is the main reasons why the rise of the climate change and environmental disruption. And then, I think climate change and environmental disruption in the 21st century also can strongly influence to encourage geopolitical dispute, including global trade risks mainly, not merely in Southeast Asia and China, but also East Asia like Japan and also South Korea. Okay, so, yeah, this is the potential resources in South China Sea. And South China Sea has 1 billion barrels of oil and 190 trillions, and also fishing 66 million tons of fish yearly catch. And also about the biodiversity, it accounts for 3,365 non-specifics fees and also known as the one-third of the global shipping and a more than 22% of global trade across the region. So, yeah, it is not surprising why this region is quite challenging so far. So, yeah, the root causes of this presentation is about unregulated activities in South China Sea that is related to environmental disruption. You can see how the overfishing and also contestance tourism development, mainly, for example, between China and the Philippine, they are developing tourism where it has implications to environmental degradation, especially biodiversity and conservation. Because according to CHIAS, South China Sea region, they has a various and a billion resources for marine and biodiversity conservation. So, yeah. So, the next is unregulated activity and reported activity have opened a wider security, security problem, especially access to resources, such as they do something like very pressing, like unregulated activities in the contested areas and also environmental degradation, where access to resources and environmental degradation, it has impact to threat restriction and the social economy. So, social economy like the potential, the upcoming climate migration, extreme poverty, especially in the coastal areas. Okay, next, so this is research that I summarized from University of British Columbia. They mentions that in the 2100, there will be a dramatic biodiversity extinction and also climate threats, especially in the East and South China Sea due to intensive climate change and also over-exploitation on the marine ecosystems, such as overfishing. And yeah, so the implication, threat disruption, and also human security. So, I put how South Korea and Japan, they are the most affected in terms of the trade, because what I discovered from the resources, Japan and the South Korea, they don't have, they don't have the direct geopolitical interest in the region, but they depend on the region for importing and exporting. So, if any climate crisis that impact to the supply chains and also international trade, Japan and South Korea are the most affected, because they depends on energy and also natural resources from Middle East, and they cross the region. And also, human security, what I mentioned earlier, like the climate migration and also extreme poverty that are still sticking around across the coastal community in the region. So, yeah, so this is the theoretical framework, and then how climate change lead global trade disruption. Because according to London's Global Economy, they mentions how climate crisis is highly leading to global trade economy, because it is connect to supply chains process. And also, they mentions how maritime transportation is the most exposed, because they depends on the extreme weather and also the situation whether the sea leveraged and then how they can operate the region. And then, it can raise the cost and also reroute and then time-consuming. Okay, so given to the situation, this is the three problem analysis in this case. You can see in the roots, this is root causes, where the root causes of this problem is the unregulated and reported industrial activity. And then, on the middle, the problem, so the problem is overhaunting natural resources and also geopolitical disputes. And then, the impacts on the top, where the impacts in the long-term, in the future, it could be environmental driven problems in the global disruption and also social economy issue, including biodiversity loss. So, beyond of the three problem analysis, I also provide three solution analysis regarding to the case, where the strategy is located at the grassroots, where I, my presentation is highly recommend how to share cooperation, ocean accounts that consist of marine special plan and also marine protected areas, ocean data management, strengthening regional ocean databases. And then, the objective of the ocean accounts itself, it can strengthen good global ocean governance and also evidence-based policy, and then how South China Sea can rely on scientific and policy-based action. So, this is the targeting goals. If we, if we can see the objective, and then it can harmonize political tension and then geopolitical interest. And also, the most important one, how ocean accounts can assist South China Sea to meet a global target in the 21st century, such as Montreal Global Biodiversity Framework, GPF, Sustainable Development Goals, and also international biodiversity strategy and action. So, what is the ocean account? So, ocean accounts is like destructive data that compiles economic and also social and environmental ecosystem, and it can, it can help decision-making process to inform scientific-based action. So, this is the component of economic accounts, ecosystem accounts, and the social accounts, where it can strengthen the resources of the policy in the future, and then it can measure what's the next and then what can do depends on the available resources. So, yeah, this is the how ocean accounts in the policy cycle. It helps problem identification, policy intervention, and monitoring evaluation. And yeah, it can mitigate environmental crisis, economic risk, social accounts, and also it can empower political management, especially how to create sense of belonging and minimize militarization, you know? Next, so, yeah, shortly, how ocean accounts for international commitment in South China Sea. It can create sense of belonging to the nature and community. And then, this kind of a few of the frameworks that can be achieved, such as Sustainable Development Goals, which is SDG 14, SDG 13, SDG 1, SDG 2, SDG 5, because they can compile social accounts, environmental accounts, and also economic accounts. So, this is how ocean accounts for global biodiversity framework. And for high level panel, for a sustainable ocean economy, for the Anglos, especially it can assist to transform science to policy. And yeah, this is the way how to actualize ocean account in South China Sea by optimizing our regional cooperation ASEAN Plus Three, where they place to provide technical support, funding support, such as how ASEAN Plus Three can provide regional ocean databases, global dialogue, ecosystem protection, monitoring, and evaluation. And also ASEAN Plus Three can promote it to each member state to adapt into national legislation to achieve the goal target that assist by ocean accounts like social economy and environmental issue. I can't, maybe I stop here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nora. A really interesting presentation with such initiative, ocean account. Thank you very much. And the next presentation is by Mr. Hoang Anh Nguyen, a Vietnamese student in the university, in the Trope University in Australia. Mr. Hoang Anh is pursuing a Master of International Relation at Trope University and holds a Bachelor in International Studies from Hanoi University. He is also a recipient of the La Trope University Excellence Scholarship and an American Chamber of Commerce Commerce in Hanoi Scholars Award 2022. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Han. Hi, everyone. My name is Hoang Anh, and I'm very honored to be representing La Trope Asia. So, before we start, I would like to acknowledge that when I researched this topic, I was working at La Trope University, which is located on the land of the Warndesi people. I like to pay respects to the elders, past and present, and emerging, and extend this respect to all the indigenous peoples whose countries we're working collectively across today. South was never ceded, so the land was and always will be Aboriginal land. So, my topic is on next generation technologies and gray zone tactics in the South China Sea. And for today, I want to talk about the role of AI, autonomous underwater vehicles, also known as AOVs, and digital maritime law enforcement, and how this helps in shaping gray zone conflicts in regions. So, we all know that the South China Sea is a very hotly contested region. It is very strategic, not only for its vast resources, but for its position. It is contested over China, various ASEAN states, and other global powers such as the United States. And while traditionally, countries will avoid direct military conflict in this region, gray zone tactics have been very common in this region as well. This includes the deployment of paramilitary forces, the construction of artificial islands, and of course, the use of AI technology. And the ever usage of this technology has the potential to lead to an AI arms race. So, I would like to start by looking into how these technologies shape gray zone warfare. So, one of most important developments in next generation technologies is AI and autonomous systems. Unmanned vehicles are becoming a key element in these gray zone tactics. Specifically, we can look into the case study of Japan, sorry, China, which has been integrating these technologies to its military in the South China Sea. And these technologies are increasingly being used for advanced surveillance systems. Another thing I want to look into is maritime drones and unmanned systems. So, unmanned systems, also known as autonomous underwater vehicles or AOVs, have been playing a central role in gray zone tactics. There has been an increasing rise in deployment in maritime security. China's UAV fleet, which includes the Haiyi Sea Wing and the Chiang Long series, is capable of deep-sea exploration, reconnaissance, and mine warfare. So, this allows China to be able to monitor and potentially disrupt the activities of other parties in the South China Sea. In addition, Australia and Singapore are also developing unmanned systems to help counteract China's influences. Another way that countries have been using these new technologies is digital maritime law enforcement. So, this includes the usage of technology to blur the lines between law enforcement and military action. A good case study is China, which has been using, in addition to AOVs, digital maritime law enforcement technologies such as AI, big data analytics, and drones. And these are increasingly being used by the Chinese Coast Guard. And this was also integrated in China's 2021 Coast Guard law, which provides a legal framework for these operations. And it's not just China that's doing these tactics. The United States has also been using these technologies through its sea vision system, which allows the integration of AI into satellite systems to track and monitor these maritime activities. And these combines data from various sources, including satellites and autonomous identification systems, or AIS, to detect ships when they manipulate their AIS to track evading. So, So with the rise of these technologies, the United States and allied powers have been responding to these gray zone tactics by developing new technologies and partnerships. So the Quad has their partnership for maritime domain awareness, which improves upon the sea vision technologies. And in addition, Singapore and Australia have been collaborating on their maritime and AI systems. So I want to look into some case studies. The first one is Singapore, which has been using AI and advanced simulations to enhance maritime security training, especially amongst the Coast Guard. In addition, China has been using these autonomous technologies for surveillance and reconnaissance. And of course, while they are used for scientific purposes, these can also expand for military activities as well. And so I want to go into basically what are the main concerns, especially the ethical and legal concerns when it comes to the usage of these technologies. AUVs fit very well into gray zone tactics, mostly because of their covert nature. And when it comes to an area like such as the South China Sea, any misunderstanding could lead to escalations. One thing to note that the Philippines, which is a South China Sea claimant, is also a United States ally treaty. So any escalation could cause further conflicts. So I also like to point out that with new AI technologies, this might spark in fifth generation arms race. Which countries will increasingly focus on development of these technologies, which while they can be beneficial, could also be used for covert operations. Specifically, intelligence and intelligence gathering and surveillance, because they're very highly effective. And this could also heighten tensions in the South China Sea as well. And the data that they can gather includes topography, naval movements and submarine activities. They can also be used for underwater sabotage and mine warfare, especially to be used for mine laying and sabotaging the undersea infrastructure. And of course, that also includes undersea cables, which are very critical for navigation in the South China Sea as well as communication amongst countries. New technologies cause ships, both military and civilian, to be vulnerable to cyber attacks as well. And of course, fundamentally, the legal concerns. The thing is that under article, sorry, let me pull up. Under Article 29 of Unclothes, unmanned vehicles can be interpreted as ships of other countries. And of course, in a sensitive area like the South China Sea, accidental incursions. And a lot of these incursions may not be on purpose, you know. Because if we're using automated system, these data driven machines can't really think. They're just using the input. And accidental calculation could be misinterpreted and conflict can arise. So I would like to conclude that while there are many advantages to the technologies, there are also concerns with the usage of these technologies as well. The growing use of AUVs and AI can contribute to rise of accidental escalation, a potential fifth generation arms race and of course destabilize the region as a whole. So while they are reshaping gray zone tactics, because they allow for more covert and precise flexible operations, there is a large risk of escalation in the South China Sea with the usage of these technologies, especially if they're used for gray zone tactics. And so my recommendations, and this is just based on my preliminary research, is that the best way to counteract this, especially among Southeast Asian countries, is intelligence cooperation. AI is very powerful, but it's only as powerful with the data that you input into the machines. And so AI power, so being able to cooperate in sharing data is really essential when it comes to dealing with these issues. And of course, with regards to AI, which is very new, I believe there should be a new code of conduct that should integrate AI into defense systems and focus on responsible development, transparency and human oversight into these technologies. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoang Anh. And the last presentation is by Ms. Alisa Shavikwa from Malaysia. She has a BA degree in international and strategic studies from the University of Malaysia. And her presentation is on the topic, next generation surveillance leveraging youth driven human and ocean for the South China Sea security.
Security is not a product, but a process. So while we often think about security as something that we achieve through force or even technology, it's important that it's an ongoing process. Nowhere is this more true in the case of South China Sea, a region where surveillance gap threaten not only local stability, but as well global security. Good day, everyone. My name is Alisa Shavikwa. And I would like to first and foremost thank the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam for inviting me sharing my thoughts today. So today, I'm not only standing before you just a peace builder, where I work at the United Network of Young Peace Builders, or a defense policy analyst, where I have previously attached myself with the Ministry of Defense Malaysia. But as someone who has witnessed the real impact of these blind spots. More importantly, I'm here to discuss how can we fill them by untapping one of the major resources, which is leveraging youth driven human intelligence and open source intelligence for a better and prosperous security of South China Sea. So let's establish the urgency, right? South China Sea is often reduced just into a headline of territorial disputes. But we need to remember that it's far more than that. So it is a vital trade, I would say artery, where it is responsible up to 3.4 trillion global trade annually. So what happens here doesn't just ends here. It will ripple out into the damage towards the global market, international security, as well as regional power dynamics. But there's also a quieter and more insidious challenge present beneath this surface. So surveillance gaps in the region leave us very exposed towards these types of threats, which is illegal fishing, smuggling, as well as covert military activities. Not only that, we also have China on the other hand. They have filled these gaps with an expensive naval presence and maritime infrastructure that dwarfs what ASEAN nations can offer. This isn't just about a military arms race. It's also about who has the ability to monitor, detect and respond to these threats. Right, so now I would say I would like to be frank. The traditional systems that most of the ministry that of defense are relying upon when it comes to South China Sea are frankly outdated. So for instance, we have automatic identification systems. It fails to detect one of the prominent issues that we were discussing earlier about duck fleets. They aren't able to basically detect those who fleets are used for illegal fishing, smuggling or even gray zone tactics. Furthermore, while we have great satellite coverage, we need to also remember that it's often hampered by bad weather as well as the vast region that it needs to cover. Furthermore, we also have naval patrol as another source of where we can get our intelligence. But frankly, we aren't able to catch up in terms of frequency or even the scales of China's operation. So what does all of this look in terms of impact? We are losing every single year about $10 billion when it comes to IU fishing alone. And if you add more towards the equation, that's pretty much saddening coming to see as a youth in South China Sea, where this will be our region as a home. So the reality is that ASEAN nations aren't really prepared to effectively monitor and respond to such threats. When we talk about our intelligence solutions, if you can see predominantly, it tends to focus more into technology. For example, we utilize satellites, reader system as well as drones. But what if I told you, we need to go back to the basic. We need to go back to the basic, I would say humankind, which is people like me and you. Or even more so in the context of South China Sea, which is the coastal communities. How about we leverage what we can have with the human intelligence as well capitalize on what we have on the internet or social media to drive open source intelligence? So I would say there is a glimmer of hope despite the depressing conversation we had from morning, right? Youth is an untapped and overlooked resources. Why? Because there's also two factors on it. First is proximity. They are also, for instance, the youth that are living on the coastal shores. They are the first line of observations that are seeing all the unmarked vessels coming through here and there. They are able to actually report this. But then here comes the question about the potential. Despite being digital natives, one of the lack, lacking part of areas is that we don't really have proper mechanisms. And to be fair, when we talk about transparency and most of the issues, it stems back to trust. Do personally, as you, do we trust our government on these type of operations? Or even the government, do they trust the youth? And I think this is something that we should explore furthermore, right? So when we talk about this type of solution, obviously, one of the question will be like, how successful can it be? So let me give you a case study back in the Niger Delta within Nigeria. I was able to talk to some of like the communities there. And what they have implemented there is that the youth at the coastal communities are actually given a lot of capacity building. They are able to understand what is going on in terms of like oil, I would say rigging, as well as illegal activities happening within the Delta itself. And it is reported in literatures that you can see these activities are able to detect four times more illegal activities that the national patrols are even missing out. So youth can be trained and they can be integrated towards our existing intelligence framework directly feeding towards the C4ISR system. So now another question, I believe that must be at the back of your mind. This all sounds really good. How do we actually implement it? Obviously, how can we rely when it comes to all the sources? Or how can we, I would say, ensure that these are the things that we need to look at? So firstly, we can talk about verification. We're not just simply taking the information right on there. We can definitely cross reference it with existing military data. For instance, the naval patrol and satellites. That we can do a data triage and at the end of the day, we can filter the false report. Second, we can also train the youths to integrate, I would say, all of this knowledge. Because at the end of the day, while all of us are really, I would say, privileged to be here to talk about South China Sea, back at home, a lot of youths aren't really interested about South China Sea. And the literacy, I would say, awareness towards the issue is predominantly quite high. So what we need to focus is not, not that I'm trying to say that we know we should deploy youth as untrained civilians straight away to the sea and become the ice on the ground. What I'm trying to say is that we should focus on capacity building. Tell them what is actually the narrative coming from the government? Why is this an issue and how can we actually approach moving forward? But at the same time, I know there'll be criticism also coming from other governments. This sounds like a very suspicious, I would say, activity. So how can we engage this in a better sense? I think it's better for us to package it as a form of capacity building training focusing on maritime safety. We can also take a look on environmental degradation, et cetera. And it's not looking at a militarized surveillance lens. So now all of this skepticism is kind of being, I would say, drawn out. What we need to do as a first step is to launch targeted pilot programs. We integrate youth in the coastal communities towards learning about all of this as well as developing a system that can verify these datas. And all the verified datas will then be escalated to the military officials to see how can we better respond to the community. And at the regional level, we should engage ASEAN nations as a track to diplomatic effort. So making it look as a people to people initiative to build trust as well as provide real life data. At the end of the day, I think I would like to encourage everyone on the floor to actually realize that it's no longer about surveillance gap as one of the biggest issue. It's also about our over reliance on technology that sometimes could be infiltrated and cannot be really trusted. What is actually can be trusted is your very own citizens and your very own community. How can we leverage this is also to push for youth driven human and ocean. Because it can enhance our ability to monitor, respond as well as coordinate a better effort in real time and actually in a very low cost with a unique proximity to the problem. I invite each of you to explore about this idea and think about how can we actually visualize this in reality? That's all for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your presentations, for your nice presentation, for sharing extremely, for sharing with us extremely interesting ideas to contribute to promote and strengthen the maritime security in the South, in our South China Sea on very different aspects. Something, one is on some analysis, deep analysis on the situation, the real situation of the region. And another one is on such initiative to make better the situation. And now, please let me invite the question, maybe comments from the audience, maybe from the young people too in the audience. Yeah, okay, please. Yes.
Thank you very much, Madame Chair. And to inform the media for influence of Vietnam. Well, first of all, thank you very much for the presentations made by all four speakers, which are fascinating. But to me, I just want to have a few questions to Professor Chen from Chile. I'm very interested in the presentation, in making comparison, commonality and also the differences between South Asia and Latin America. So in this regard, it could be much more interesting if you can share with us the thoughts or the findings when it comes to the following. Number one, are there any, any countries or any, or the great powers in the region pursuing any claims which are legally unfolded, either territorial or maritime claims? Number one, for instance, are there any countries, including the United States, are claiming sovereignty over low tide elevations located beyond 12 nautical miles from any high tide feature? That's for, for instance. And number two, when it comes to settlement of disputes between countries in Latin America or in America as a whole. So to my initial observation, just when it comes to ICJ, for instance, when it comes to the United States, I rapidly seen that there are some 27 cases which involve the United States. So in, in this regard, do you have, I mean, are there any comments when it comes to the differences between, I mean, Asia or Southeast Asia and Latin America or America in this regard? Because to my understanding, even Chile, right? You, at least you have done some, well, four or five cases before it, I mean, before ICJ, International Court of Trustees. And I think this is, Chile could be one of, I think, a leading example when it comes to using judicial bodies or, I mean, judicial, international judicial bodies to settle dispute between or among the states if negotiations fails. So also in this regard, could you offer further comments? Thank you.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Thank you very much. Actually, it was very much interesting to listen to all the full presentations on the question of how we tackle the issue before us and also how to enhance cooperation through very concrete ideas or projects. I thank you very much for that. I have two queries. Number one, related to ocean accounts, I think from Arista. It was very comprehensive presentation and the idea is very much good. So my question is that you choose APT ASAN plus three. Why trust ASAN plus three but not ISO summit? In a broader context, we have more dialogue partners to work with ASAN. The second query or the second question will be put to Professor Chen from Chile, I think. You talk about mini-lateralism as complement to ASAN. Now, the first query is that you talk about mini-lateralism in Southeast Asia. I'm not quite sure if we have mini-lateralism in Southeast Asia. Why do not talk about mini-lateralism in Indo-Pacific? And if it is in Southeast Asia and it's just a future perspective of development of the region, because we do not have in place that the kind of mini-lateralism. But if we talk about Indo-Pacific, then we have several cases of mini-lateralism, including Quad or Coast arrangements between US, Korea, Japan, US, Philippine, Japan, something like that. Then, I love the idea of having mini-lateralism to complement ASAN structure and activities. But mini-lateralism in a broader context of Indo-Pacific will be seen as a part of major power rivalry. And ASAN member states are very sensitive to that one. And until this point in time, they are very reluctant to approach those mini-lateralism, even bilaterally and collectively as ASAN. So how you will convince in the second case, ASAN member states to have some linkages or light, or channel of cooperation with mini-lateralism, especially on case-by-case basis like climate change, supply resilience, or critical and emerging technologies, for example, that will not be put in too much context of power rivalry. Thank you very much then.
Okay, thank you. Just two reactions, but with many questions inside. So we will give time to our speakers to deal with it first and then the next questions, okay? Now maybe Ms. Seif with the many questions for you.
Yeah, okay. So first of all, I gotta give you guys a word of advice. I could talk about this for hours, so I'll try to be brief, all right? So firstly, okay, so in Latin America, there are not that many, okay. So there are multiple legal disputes, maritime legal disputes. There are plenty of those which have been solved under international law. My country is one, we actually lost against Peru a couple of years back. And there are other examples such as those, okay? That being said, my core argument isn't about a specific, about a specific issue. It is more like a general question about the potential or of a specific institutional structure and what it could represent and what it could provide, okay? And then again, I'm not saying that this is necessarily the answer. I'm saying that it could be part of an answer, all right? So that is the, that's the first thing that I'd say. However, however, having said that, you should take my words with a pinch of salt, because most of the disputes within my region do not involve the USA, okay? That's a big elephant in the room. The USA settled a long time ago its borders. So in that sense, it is different compared to what is going on in Southeast Asia, okay? So the US achieved what we call regional hegemony a long time ago. But then again, even though the US achieved regional hegemony a long time ago and has greatly influenced a region, I do believe that there is still room to learn from that experience, okay? So what's going on in Southeast Asia is definitely different. You have two major powers, two great powers which are competing for influence, absolutely. But then again, I would argue that because we have been dealing for over, for over hundred of, for over hundred years with a regional hegemon, we have learned a thing of two of how to manage the expectations of these great power and how to try to achieve regional or rather regional strategy or regional objectives within this umbrella, okay? So again, the example and the comparison is by no means perfect, but we only have so much data when it comes to IR and social science. And I would argue that bringing the experience from Latin America is probably the best data that we have for the situation in Southeast Asia. That would be my argument, but I don't know, you could, I mean, you could argue back and please do. I welcome that. So those would be my first comments. And I apologize if I'm leaving too much outside from my answer, but there were plenty. And I'm not that fast writing the questions, so that would be the first one. And then, the second one was primarily about mini-lateralism and how to deal with mini-lateralism when we face great power rivalry, right? But to that, I'd say that, look, do great powers want us to come to certain agreements that are against their interest? Absolutely not. I mean, great powers, look, great powers are not evil, are not good either. They're just great powers and they try to maximize their power and their interests, okay? So will they try to stop small and middle powers from coming to certain agreements that go against them? Absolutely yes. Is it, is it still possible? Yes, it is. So then again, is it easy? No, it's not. But that's why I do believe that when you bring a handful of specific countries in an issue-specific framework, three, four countries, like-minded countries, it is easier to come to certain agreements that go against the interests of great powers. There are risks as well, obviously. For example, when you have these kind of organizations which are very light, such as the Pacific Alliance, when there is a change in the leadership, you really have, you have a real problem. And that happened with Mexico and the Pacific Alliance. Once AMLO was elected, the whole Pacific Alliance really suffered a lot. And then after that, we have the president in Colombia. So are there problems? Yes. Is it a perfect solution? Absolutely not. Is it a potential answer? I think so. Okay, so that would be my answer. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you so much, sir, for asking the question. Yeah, I'm aware that how ocean accounts should be expanded beyond ASEAN plus three. And then the reason why I choose ASEAN plus three, because ASEAN plus three consists of among Southeast Asia, China, Japan and South Korea, where each country, they have interests, they have a political interest, direct or indirect, in this region. Because I mentioned earlier, like the South Korea and Japan, they don't have geopolitical interest in the region, but they depend on the routes for exporting and importing goods from overseas, mainly from the Middle East. So that's why, why this cooperation should be absorbed by ASEAN plus three in order not merely for protecting environmental ecosystem, but also it creates sustainable eco-friendly investment in the future. So that's why ASEAN accounts comprises environmental, social, economic. So economic accounts will be, is related to GDP, marine transportation, the indicator, the metrics will help each country to contribute peacefully beyond of environmental, geopolitical, but also how to extend a blue economy or blue job opportunity among the countries. So I wish this practice should be expanded beyond of South China Sea, but also any countries, because, you know, climate change is growing dramatically. And then I feel that environmental disruption is a shared responsibility because we consume water, we absorb fresh water, and then this is a responsibility that we should go, we should overcome together. Thank you.
Thank you. And more questions, please? And I would like to have some questions from the younger figures, please.
So hello, I'm from the Young Leaders Program and I have a little comment for Mr. Sim first. So I think that mini-lateralism has already existed in this area. So for example, we have cooperation between Vietnam, Laos and Cambodia on border trade or cooperation between Thailand, Vietnam, Laos and Myanmar on the Mekong River cooperation. But the problem is that the great powers rivalry still happens. So my question is, should we incorporate these great powers on the mini-lateralism forms? Or what should we do to deal with that? And I have another question for Mr. Huang. You talked about technology and AI and its potential for ASEAN. But the question is, like, how or when, or where can we get the funding for these technologies? Thank you.
Thank you. One more question, please. Yes, please. Lady in red, please.
Thank you. I thought you were deliberately trying to avoid my asking a question. Yeah, my name is De Fortuna Anwar from Indonesia. I really enjoy this and I'm very happy to see the young leaders being brought in into this dialogue. My comment is to one, a lot of very interesting presentations, but I think some, maybe some clarifications. Within ASEAN, while there is difficulty in having an agreement on issues, when it comes to security cooperation, ASEAN has never been multilateral. The modus operandi has always been unilateral. So Ambassador Pam, it's not true that we don't have unilateral within ASEAN. So when we have the challenges in the Straits of Malacca, it's just between Indonesia, Malaysia and Singapore when we dealt with a pirate attacks. When it comes to the Sulusi, the Abu Sayyaf threat, for example, it's multilaterals between Indonesia, Malaysia and the Philippines. So for a long time, ASEAN has avoided multilateralizing security cooperation because ASEAN does not want to appear as a military patch. The first time ever that ASEAN actually organized a multilateral security exercise was in 2023, when Indonesia chaired ASEAN and the first time they had a naval exercise. So in fact, when it comes to practical security cooperation, the SOP has always been unilateral, not multilateral ASEAN. But I agree that there's a real need for ASEAN to make decision-making much more efficient. Because otherwise ASEAN, you know, the criticism again ASEAN is that it's not responsive, it's not quick enough. But multilaterals has been, in fact, you know, there. The question becomes whether we have ASEAN countries have multilaterals with external partners. I think it is also happening already. Right, for example, Indonesia, Australia and India are developing some bilateral cooperation. And I'm sure that, you know, there are many, many more. But I think that your point about the importance of multilateralism, not as a challenge, but as a complement is very important. Also, before we agreed on ASEAN free trade, for example, there's a focus on sub-regional cooperation because it was very difficult to agree at the ASEAN level for a long time. Now, my question is, China is also becoming very active in Latin America. So how does it play out in terms of the United States as the incumbent hegemon there for a long time? And with China coming in, what kind of conflicts are emerging in Latin America?
Yes, since Mr. Seif has many, many questions, so you will have a little bit time to prepare, okay? So now, Mr. Huang with a question, please.
Okay, so thank you for your question. So I think the point of my presentation is more or less to showcase the potential of AI, not unless promote the usage of it. And of course, countries as sovereign nations will use the technology to their own means. And individually, each country has found ways to procure these technologies on their own. We've seen that in the conflicts in the Middle East and in Ukraine, that there has been trend in which they can repurpose civilian technologies or learn from civilian technologies and use them for military applications. Like I said, not every country will be able to use these technologies equally. Some have the capacity to fund it more on their own. And of course, Southeast Asia as a whole, we do have some capacity, but not all. And so I think certain countries will definitely try to find funding somewhere else, either bilaterally with more developed countries like the United States or Japan, or even multilaterally amongst each other. But I think fundamentally, that is still within the decisions of each nation. I'm not really promoting for an all ASEAN funding for more AI technology, but I do believe that there is a potential for more ASEAN research into the potential of it.
Thank you, Mr. Huang. And why I have said that Mr. Seif is a hot man, hot guy today, because he also has two other questions on the screen, two questions online. Always for Mr. Seif, from youth viewpoint, how will mini-lateral proliferation shape Asia's, Southeast Asia regional architecture? And the last, the, one more question. How high is the air bonus on the South China Sea in Latin America?
All right, let's keep going. Okay, so I'll tackle first the clarification that the lady in red, apologies, made about ASEAN and how ASEAN has been minilateral, minilateral. And fair enough, what I would say to that. And then again, okay, all this discussion, okay, I don't bring any solutions and I don't bring facts. I only bring potential solutions and more questions. And to that, I would say that I think that there is like an ASEAN way, okay? There's an ASEAN way and there's a clear way in which things are done within ASEAN. To that, I'd say that maybe, maybe that, okay. So let me put it this way. When we analyze domestic political systems, such as the American system, the president has a veto, okay? And because the president has a veto, there are some laws that are never presented, okay? That they are never moved forward by Congress because they know that the president is going to use the veto. What I'm trying to say with this is that I do believe that maybe, maybe, okay, no, it's not like I do believe, but maybe, maybe there are some discussions that are not taking place within ASEAN due to the ASEAN way, okay? That might be a bit too controversial, that there might be some, you know, there might be some internal issues. And to that, there might be some room for some And to that, there might be some room for some outside discussion that might help to move forward an agenda that within ASEAN would face certain difficulties, okay? That would be my potential, let's say, working hypothesis to that issue, okay? Secondly, you mentioned about China in Latin America. Yeah, that is becoming one of the greatest topics in academia. I actually have a paper about that, so go and read it, in which I analyzed the Belt and Road Initiative in Latin America. So to that, I'd say that even though China has become the main trading partner for most of the region, the US still holds regional hegemony by far, okay? Because the reach of the US goes way beyond, way beyond trade, okay? It reaches the political system and the elites. And that's really what you want. Because it's not only about trade, it's about influence. And trade has influence, absolutely, yes. But when you, when you cooperate with elites, it's a whole different game. And when you look at where Latin Americans are going to study, for example, most of us, we go to the US and things like those. So I'd say that even though, obviously, the US has lost prominence because China is such a big trading partner, I'd say that by far the US is still the regional hegemon, okay? And let's remember what happened last time, that the US was really challenged, really challenged within the region. We had the Cuban Missile Crisis. So again, I'd say that it's still, the US still has regional hegemony, okay? So, okay, there's a quick question. How high is the awareness on Southeast, of South China Sea in Latin America? I'd say that nonexistent, nonexistent at all. My students, they really don't know much about Southeast Asia, which is a big issue. And well, we're here trying to bridge that gap. That's what I would have to say to that. Other than that, well, and there's another question, which is from youth viewpoint. How will mini lateral proliferation shape Asia's and regional architecture? I'd say that actually this, I link this to the whole issue about ASEAN centrality. And when there was the, when we just had the panel about ASEAN centrality, I asked some, a question that might have sound a bit weird or not a very good question for many of you guys about how you would see the region without ASEAN. And I think that that question, it's quite interesting when you look at, when you look at that question from an outsider's perspective. Because to me, organizations and international organizations, institutions are just a tool. In that sense, we can use that tool and then we can discard that tool, okay? So I'm not saying that we should discard ASEAN, please. I'm saying that the younger generation might see this institution that you cherish in a different way and might be willing to cross that bridge and go beyond what has been the norm for the last 30 years, 40 years or so, okay? Again, I'm not calling for anything. I'm just saying that maybe the next generation will see the organization in a different light. And that would be my, that would be my reply. I think I'm leaving something outside. I apologize. I didn't write it all. Apologies. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seif, Mr. Seif. And now we will have the last round of questions, right? Okay, please.
Thank you, Madame Chair. My name is Vu Haidang. I'm from the East Sea Institute of the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam. I would like to have a question to our young leader from Malaysia, Ms. Elisa. So we mentioned about human intelligence for youth. Basically, I would like to know whether you are aware of any existing regional mechanisms allow the youth to participate in those kind of activities? Or if there's not, would you suggest any mechanism that can help the youth do so? Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for the question. And I think this is very timely because I remember that in the previous panel, we were discussing where how when we also look at South China Sea, it's often either being segmented into the ASEAN political security cooperation when it comes to like, for example, the governance aspect of it, or if it's going to fall under the economic pillar, if it falls on the trade. And I think this is where, I think, at least from my observation, all of this content did not really cross into the ASEAN socio-cultural cooperation. That's what's the missing link. Although where we have a lot of like youth exchange between one another, but when it comes to, I would say, the experience, I have to go through other organizations, for example, through UN, I would say regional workshops and et cetera, to meet with my fellow friends from Philippines and Vietnam to understand how big of an impact of South China Sea case towards there. So what I would propose is that I don't think that there is no mechanism. I think there is. It's just, I think the capacity building has not been pushed out or being framed as a much more popular, I would say, initiative. That's one. Second, it tends to be siloed more on the policymaking end. So while I'm, I'll say I'm a big advocate that as much as good policymaking is happening on the table, if it's not translated to the grassroots, it will not work and it will actually eventually backfire. So I think within the ASEAN Secretariat and even the ministers, they have to work correspondingly. Looking at this issue must be intersectional. It should not be looking just when we talk about intelligence as primarily a security or traditional security lens. We can also take a look on other items. And I think one of the, at least from the conversation I had with my fellow friends within the government, conversations are really raised in the ASEAN disaster risk reduction mechanisms, but not on the other segments as well. So perhaps we can explore and I call upon dear, I would say, policy makers here to perhaps pitch it out to the HQ and see how can we explore this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your reactions, for your answers. Yeah, time is up. Anyway, we have really enjoyed this opportunity to get to know each other, to share the contact among us. And I believe we can keep discussing about this topic as any other ones together. Now it is my honor to close this special session. Thank you all for coming, for enjoying and sharing perspectives which are very fruitful. Thank you and see you soon.
Well, may I have another round of applause? Not only for Dr. Ling Of Han, but also her excellency Ambassador La Salle from Spain for being the two female moderators within the 16th South China Sea Conference. All right, Excellencies Ambassadors, distinguished guests, participants, ladies and gentlemen. Well, that is a wrap for our day one of the South China Sea Conference. Thank you once again for your patience, as well as extensive discussions and a lot of food for thought. We'll be seeing you all here tomorrow at 8:30 for four more sessions on setting the norms, setting the rules regarding unclause, regarding legal instruments, regarding emerging technologies and emerging issues in maritime domain. And don't forget that our second live commentary hosted by Dr. Vu Haidang from the Diplomatic Academy of Vietnam will be coming up next at 6:00 PM. And the live commentary this time will be in English. So feel free to stick around if you want to listen to the live commentary or you can also access the live commentary via our news, via our livestream feeds on Zoom. Well, that is a wrap for me today. Thank you once again. This is Huang, this is Huang from the East Sea Institute, signing off. Thank you and we'll be seeing you tomorrow for day two of the 16th South China Sea Conference. And don't forget for our onsite delegate, please pay attention to the QR code, which are now available on screen. So please use your mobile devices to scan the QR code for the survey, for the post-conference surveys and feedback. Your comments, your suggestions, your advice are always highly appreciated. Thank you so much.